Okay, I think we've got started. It's a little after seven.
No, this is a different one.
Yeah, okay. Okay, let's begin. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting. It's a public information meeting about the recreational marijuana law in Massachusetts, and I appreciate all of you coming. It's pretty nasty weather outside, so we appreciate your making the effort. So I'd like to start off and do the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where rich have scans, when they should, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. A few introductions here in the beginning. The members up here on the Planning Board, Dennis Fleming, Floyd Kelly, Frank Larrange, Mary Ann Gendron is the Administrator for us, and my name's Doug Martin. And we have some visitors that I want to introduce. We have Janet Pierce and Chris Ryan in the back over here, who are from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. And they've been invaluable in helping the towns through Central Massachusetts deal with the issue of recreational marijuana. They've given us a great deal of information. They've held a number of public meetings, and we owe them a real vote of thanks because they've been very helpful in helping us do this. Thank you. And we have some folks from the Q Drug Program here in Berry, Kathy Enman and Nikah Jenkins. Did I do that right? Oh, good, thanks. And they're here representing the Q Drug Program. So thank you for coming.
And Betty Chase.
Oh, I'm sorry, Betty Chase, thank you. Okay. Very -- I'm going to make this very brief, but what we're doing, the purpose of this meeting is, the Planning Board is charged with writing bylaws, zoning laws for the town to manage various aspects of what goes on in the town business and that sort of thing. And what we want to do with this, we want to learn what the citizens of Berry think about this recreational marijuana law and having or not having establishments in town. And so we're having two of these public meetings. This one, we're having another one on January 30th, same time on Tuesday evening, right, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Tuesday evening as well. So if someone couldn't make this, you can tell them about that meeting. We'll be doing roughly the same thing we're doing this evening. One small, little bit of information. I don't know how, some of you are probably more familiar with this law than others, but I just wanted to just recap a little bit what's gone on in the past. In November of 2016, the Massachusetts voters approved a ballot question allowing recreational marijuana use. And they keep track of the, how the votes go in different towns. In Berry, a majority of the voters in Berry voted to approve this law. Because many provisions of the law took effect after the ballot vote, and because there were no bylaws governing these facilities, local governments were advised to adopt a temporary moratorium on these facilities until such time as the state of Massachusetts could develop regulations and guidance for local governments. The town of Berry, based on this advice, and some of this advice came from the folks at Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission through some of the folks they were working with. The town of Berry, we put a moratorium proposal on the ballot for the vote in June, the town meeting in June 2017, and that moratorium was adopted. And it stays in place until December 30th, 2018, with the idea that that would be a sufficient amount of time so that when the state had developed draft regulations to govern this activity, then the town would have time to look at those, to use them to develop a bylaw to manage recreational marijuana in town. Now, the state issued those draft regulations in December. I think it was December 21st, 2017, so a little more than a few weeks ago. And so we're taking a look at those, and we're also getting help from the Regional Planning Commission with that. So that's where we are right now. And what we want to do is, we want to hear from the folks in town, what do you think about this? And just a couple of things I'd like to say. When you come up to the microphone, state your name and state whether or not you're a resident of Berry. We'd like to limit comments to two minutes. Now, if you want to, if you hear something after you've spoken and you want to speak again, you're certainly free to come back up and speak again, that will be fine. And direct all the questions to me. We don't want this to become a debate from the floor. The idea is to hear what people have to say. If you have any questions, you can ask them. I'll be calling on the Central Planning Commission folks. If I don't know the answer, and if they don't know the answer, we'll make a commitment to you that we'll try and get you the answer as soon as we can. So with that, I'd like to hear from anybody that has a comment.
Oh, the one that we've been emailing?
No, this is a different one. We didn't get that one.
Yeah. No, we didn't, we didn't get this one.
We didn't get that.
Yeah.
I was going to say, can they read, it's all right, right? You read it? Okay. Yeah, if you'd like, you can too. Anybody want to?
Yeah.
You want to read it aloud?
Well, here, here.
My name is Justin Ross, and I've been Berry for quite a number of years. I'm on Wallwind Road, I'm 20th Wallwind Road. And I like marijuana being treated like pretty similar to alcohol through a light licensing of establishments that sell alcohol. So I think the same thing should be done with marijuana.
Okay. Thank you.
That lady would like to read.
Yes. Thank you.
My name is Stevens from Wolf Harbor Grove, Stevens Farm. And I wrote a letter to this document before it was turned over to you because I wasn't sure where it was going. And it says, "I am writing this letter as I was unable to attend the meeting at the time. After reading the article in the Berry's ad about bringing marijuana into our rural communities and our local farms, I have concerns that I would like to consider. As the owner of a 200-year-old farm and 10th generation, we certainly know what a struggle it is to keep farms going today. We are dealing with aging buildings, equipment, and lack of funds to do so. We have all we can do to pay our taxes and maintain our property, losing over $3,000 in 2016 because of the drought this year, so much rain, we're unable to harvest a lot of our crops on several fields that was impossible to drive a machine and own them. I do have concerns, however, about the possibility of growing marijuana in our farm fields. We already have people breaking down our fences and crashing through gates and guardways just to ride four-wheelers and destroying our field. If this is allowed, no matter how much fencing or security cameras are put in, there is no guarantee that we'll keep press bastards from all over and know, and who knows what kind of backgrounds they may be coming from to our property and doing damage. We have children and grandchildren living on our property and here in town. We are both elderly, and who will protect us if we are threatened by these people? Even though it would be legal with the drug war, we are already fighting in our small community, this is going to be an extra burden for our police and our community. As much as the farmers need help, I think you should really consider all the consequences. I have spoken to the Massachusetts Farm Bureau, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, and while they agree we cannot stop it, it's something to think about," they said. "This farm will not be processing any marijuana in our fields, no matter what the money we can make. My family is worth more than millions to me." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Courtney Robinson. I'm a resident of Berry for 12 years. I brought some statistics on alcohol and marijuana. They're from the Federal Institute of Drug Abuse and, well, they're from the federal government. And so if anybody wants to take them, they're there for everybody to see what the statistics are. But what they show is that marijuana is not a gateway drug to hard drugs. I would just like to point out that the majority of voters in the town voted to pass this legislation. And so that is why people are so afraid of marijuana. It's relatively, relatively to alcohol at least, relatively innocuous. And those statistics are borne out by government research. Now, I'm probably going to make some enemies by saying this. What type of people have used marijuana? I don't know what you think, but I'm a person who has used marijuana for 50 years. When I was using marijuana, I went to college, I graduated with honors. I went to law school, I graduated with honors. I worked for 20 years as an attorney, as a child welfare attorney, and an assistant district attorney, okay? Now I have a medical marijuana license, so, and I have to say that for people who don't believe in that, that that has saved me so many times.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Is it possible?
Who's going to check?
Do you have a question?
Can I have my answer?
You have a question for me, or?
Hard.
Well, I don't want this to turn into questions from the camp, but why don't you save what you have to say, and then you can speak after her, okay?
So I'm happy to answer any questions that people have for me, but I know doctors and lawyers and judges who smoke marijuana, okay? They're not the people that you think, the homeless, drunk, addicts laying in the streets. I mean, I've never used anything else, okay? I've never gone on to anything harder. I do, I like the effect of it, I have to admit that, because you know what it does for me? It expands my awareness, and I like that. It opens my mind. And if you haven't ever tried opening your mind, I recommend it highly. I recommend it highly. That's my comment.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to say, the law that was, that the voters approved allows for personal possession of marijuana. It allows people to have a certain number of plants of their own, and it also allows for commercial retail establishments to sell marijuana. Now, what we're grappling with as a planning board is, you heard a comment before from someone that talked about regulating this as if, like we regulate alcohol. That's what we're, that's what we're talking about. We can't change anything about personal usage or possession or any of that. That's the law, and that's what the, what the state of, the voters in Massachusetts approved. So what we're talking about is developing bylaws to manage these commercial establishments. So I just wanted to make that clear. Okay.
My name is Jared Ocker. I'm a resident of Berry. I currently have been working as an RLE Dispensary Agent for Massachusetts cultivating marijuana going on five years now. I will say, seeing from the two facilities that I've worked at, the towns progressively have, have a lot of infrastructure, well-being and operating. So specifically in Franklin, Massachusetts, they input all new sidewalks when previous years they had nothing to do with schools. They also were able to buy all new books for said schools that they weren't able to afford previously. My new facility now has been able to implement a lot of tax deductions for patients coming in, but this has also brought in more tax revenue for the town itself, which in general would help us with our schools, with our police department, our fire department, our ambulance stations, as we've had issues housing for. In general, it's difficult to change their mindset. Should more focus on the benefits that it could bring for us as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sam Wilson. I live in Berry. I've been here for about 40 years. The gentleman who just spoke, he speaks about how towns can be benefited. Perhaps he could have found on that direction and perhaps explain how Berry specifically could be benefited from allowing or approving or licensing or regulating this substance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So as per regulation, in Massachusetts, these facilities need to pay a specific amount of taxes, and your town gets to have a lot of say in this implementation of taxes. You have more guideline, I was saying, if you want higher tax or lower tax. This allows you to get more in fluctuation of funding for the whole community in general. I also want to point out too, from these five years of my cultivation experience and being Assistant Head Cultivator at these facilities, I've only encountered two separate occasions where someone has tried to break in or get something from our dumpsters. And it's never been a situation where we've had any issues with. I actually personally talked to the gentleman, and he found out he had more issues finding a home and was looking for food than he was trying to find marijuana. So in general, that is a common misconception. As well, to extend to that, any product that is deemed unfit to serve public use families or any remnants of a plant needs to be deemed inert or put into a giant grinder or wood chipper in order to make it unusable. So there's very little concern of having this to be able to get into children's or younger generations' hands, as well as the whole aspect of invasion of your personal homes or privacy, et cetera. If anybody has any other questions to hear, turn to the floor.
As you know, Courtney Robinson, I would just like to inform the attendance, that the law provides for the town at its discretion to apply a 3% sales tax on the sale of marijuana from any retail establishment that is established in the town. So the town will benefit in that way.
What exactly has to take place for a person to come to this board to open up a business? And how can that be accomplished? Can they, what are the steps and what are the costs for that? And what avenue of recourse does somebody that wants to put in an application, who do they apply to?
Excuse me. Your name and where you live?
My name is John Usher. I'm a 30-year member of Berry. I live on 62 School Street.
Thank you.
Let me get over to you.
Okay. Yeah, the answer to that--
I'd like to just one additional thing. There's a muscular dystrophy patient that lives in our town and has suffered extremely debilitating physical pain and consequences throughout his entire life. And he's roughly 28 years old. He took and turned around his attitude and his physical ability by getting off of opiates to, and turning to use the marijuana product. I don't know what the specifics does, but I know the gentleman from when he was this high, and I knew that there was a transformation in his medication because I visited him on occasion to see how he improved. He's outlived the longest member living with the degree of debilitating illness that he has. He's a phenomenal young man, and I watched him improve greatly by using the marijuana product as opposed to an opiate product. This is something that I visually observed. I didn't even point you at that, because I think it might have some very undecided decision of people's thinking on that subject. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. No, that's all right. I didn't want you to trip.
To answer, to answer part of your questions, the, right now, the town of Berry has a moratorium in place on providing or issuing a license for a commercial recreational marijuana facility. Now, the state just finished their draft regulations. The Planning Board's going to look at those. We're going to get some help from our friends at the Regional Planning Commission, and we'll be developing, if we decide that's the way we're going to go, we'll be developing a bylaw to manage those facilities. Now, that bylaw will probably have some fees in it and that sort of thing. But the way, the process would work was if someone wanted to open a recreational marijuana facility, they would apply to the Planning Board for a special use permit. And then we would use those bylaws that we developed to issue that. So it would be managed somewhat like we're managing alcohol today. And one other thing, too. There are two separate laws in Massachusetts. There's a medical marijuana law that's already in place, and that's completely separate than this law we're talking about. This is only recreational marijuana. The medical marijuana and the way that works is completely, completely separate, and that's already in place today, so. Do we have some other comments? Oh, here we go.
Justin Ross, and it's my understanding that marijuana infused in states who eat can, someone on our takeout who can digest, and so they may not see the effects of it immediately. And this is something that could be regulated so that the amount of THC isn't excessive.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nikah Jenkins. I'm from Berry. Just to clarify, because the regulations are about 178 pages long, I guess that most of people in Berry have not read through all of them. I can tell you that they are 107 pages of legalese. But in that 107 pages, they do give regulations regarding how much THC will be allowed in a single dose of the edible. So it's not like, I mean, we hear horror stories of Colorado when it first started where you could get a bag of strawberry bears, and each berry might have 10 doses in a berry. That's not going to be the case in Massachusetts, just to make sure that that's clear. Right now, the way the regulation is set up, there will be five milligrams per candy or anything, and then, but there can be up to 20 candies in a package, which means that you have two, or you have about 100 milligrams of marijuana of THC in a package of candy. So, and while it's kind of like berry bears in the city of Massachusetts, again, I don't know if the regulations they did set up say that there could be, they could be shaped like shapes, but they couldn't be candy shapes or things like that. So just to clarify.
Great, thank you.
I do have a question for the lady who just spoke. She said something about five kilograms and 100 milligrams. I don't know how many milligrams is a lot, and how many milligrams is a little, maybe five is like a million, and 100 is like 20 milligrams, I don't know. So maybe you can quantify as to what you're speaking of. Maybe somebody who wants to, who knows what they're talking about. At number one, number two, there was a discussion about 3% sales tax. Now, I was under the impression that Colorado and California had 30% sales tax, or 20%. I don't understand how towns can earn with only 3%. Thank you.
That's Courtney Robinson. There's a state sales tax. The retail sales of marijuana, or they will be, I think that's 1%. I think that's what they're heading for, 1%. But in addition, they want to give the towns sort of an incentive, as opposed to have, or not an incentive, but at least sweeten it a little bit for the towns. The towns are given the ability to possess a local tax of 3% as well, in addition to the 20% that goes to the state. Is that correct?
I don't know. I haven't read, I haven't read all the state--
Yeah, I'm sure you have. Global towns, up to these 30 sites possess it.
I'm just a little bit confused because, as I understood when this company first came to the block a few weeks back, they were actually talking about the farmers being allowed to grow it in the fields. I'm not against actually facilities that might be under control, but if this is going to be openly done in farmers' fields, how many people have a few chickens in their backyard and say, "We have a farm, we're going to grow marijuana in the yard, and we can sell it wherever we want"? I just am a little confused over this because I, having a farm, I just don't think it's the place to be. If it's going to be in a facility or whatever, and it's going to be regulated, that's a little different. But to have it just in the open fields, like I said, no matter how much fencing or security you have, people are going to be in there after. It's not going to be controlled that way. So that was just my understanding with the selectmen meeting, that when they came out here, that's what they wanted to do. Am I right, Dennis?
Yes.
So just to touch base on the open policy of rural--
Do you want to mic up a little bit? Turn the mic up so we can--
Just to go on the open growth of policy, in Massachusetts, you cannot have it seen by any road at all, as long as it has to be in the north of Sobe right now.
So why did they come and address the--
That, I'm not 100% sure of. There was talk of co-op, which would be like--
So, it's really, it really is about your metabolism, and the frequency of use, your length of use, and how much use builds on the tolerance, so.
Good, good, thank you.
Ask questions.
That hasn't been my experience. I find that I, I don't do it anymore than I did when I was a kid, a teenager, that's when I started, when I was 17, but I don't do it anymore now than I did then. And actually, it's a little stronger now, I guess I use less, so. I think when you're a kid, you probably, if you start when you're a teenager, you know, you're probably a teenager, and you want to get high, you want to get blasted, right? Because you're a teenager. When you get to be an adult, you know, long-term, you know, you just want to relax, and so, you know, like we come home from work, we want to buy some wine or beer or something like that. I don't do that. I don't like that. I just want to puff, just to relax. That's how I do it. Well, and medically, I do it too, because it helps with pain, it helps with regular pain.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you.
Can we ask questions? What? Can we ask questions? Ask the questions, still, maybe.
These comments are just my comments and questions that I have, you know, it has nothing to do with anything else. I just am concerned about recreational marijuana being in the hands of those under 21. So, because of the growth of the brain, and the way the brain works, and the child who is studying at 12 or 13, if they acquired it, and the development of the brain from studies we've seen, and people who have come to our meetings in the last four years, definitely the concern is, is those who are under 21. So I asked you to look at how that is going to be regulated for them, and like, in alcohol, we have a breathalyzer test. At this moment, there is no test to determine, you know, with the marijuana, so just something, how is that going to be handled on that state level, and on the local level of how we're going to deal with it? Which leads me to the compensation that we're going to have to give to the police department for dealing, for dealing with these issues. We already have our regional school here, and we are a very, very busy town, so I just want to say, how are they going to be compensated for the work that they need to do to make sure that this is fair and works for everybody? So if you can look at that, and then what is happening in the schools, and do the schools need more guidance counselors, and schools are already expensive places that people complain about because of having to pay for schools? Well, if schools need more resources to help them deal with children, how are we going to compensate for that? So those are the things that I'd like you to look at in creating these rules. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, ahead, 231 Stetson, Black Farm resident. I don't want my 13-year-old son to be to stand outside on his front desk and say, "Hey, can I get you some gummy bears?", and then eat a whole bag, and then he's on the floor talking to his dog. So I would prohibit it altogether.
Okay. Edit.
I'm Jeanette Pierce, Executive Director with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, also another state agency. And I'd like to address something that Mrs. Stevens brought up, as far as the agricultural use. In the newspaper, and I believe what was presented to the Board of Selectmen, a gentleman said that he had been working with us as far as the agricultural, and that is not true. We do not support that, or are impartial, we're here to offer technical assistance. And this particular person did approach a member of our staff. He heard him out, but in no way do we support that, or have any affiliation with that organization at all.
Okay, great, thank you.
In the interest of honesty, I just, I'm just got to, and I just wanted to note that I'm in this earlier, because it says here that the 3% local tax, I guess, is a community impact fee that shall be reasonably related to the costs imposed upon municipality by the operation of the establishment, and shall, in no event, amount to more than 3% of the gross sales of the establishment, or be affected for longer than five years. So that's something different than what I learned before, and I wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. One thing I'd like to point out, other states in the United States have passed laws allowing recreational marijuana use, and they have some very high taxes associated with it. The ballot measure in Massachusetts that was approved, that ballot measure limited greatly the amount of tax that could be, that could be charged for these, for these, for these products. Now, that may have changed in these draft regulations somewhat, I don't know, but I, I did see the figure at one time, that the local community was limited at 3%, which would be, I think, like a, like a retail sales tax on these products. So that's, that's pretty small. It's not like it's going to be a big revenue generator for the, for the local community, at least right now, anyway. Yes, Chris?
I'm Chris Ryan, CMRC. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the administrative details that you may be thinking about as you proceed toward making a decision as to which way you want to go with this. Certainly, as a community that has voted yes, you have a slightly higher bar if you want to ban it altogether. You have to have a vote, and then after the vote, the town meeting would have to vote to ban it by two-thirds majority. So those two steps would have to be taken, whereas if you were a no community, you would only have to go through the town meeting process. That's one thing. In order to get licensing, there is a state license as well. The applications for those state licenses can effectively be applied for on the 1st of April, and the 15th of April is earliest point in which any of those licenses can be approved, but in most cases, they won't be, because...